Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this February 18th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Burmeyer, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Burmeyer. Leading us in prayer this evening will be Corwin Wong from First Baptist in Windsor Harbor. Pastor Wong, good to see you.
(inaudible) here. Let's like to read short excerpt from letter first Timothy. Says, first of all, that I urge that all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good and is pleasing in the sight of God our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of truth; for there is one God, and there is one mediator between God and man, the man Christ Jesus, who gave himself as a ransom for all, which is the testimony given at the proper time. And pray for us. Lord, right now, I do look up prayers for all those who are in high positions. You know, local governments, there are national governments, state governments. By your sovereign hand, you place them there to do a big job, big responsibility, to look after the care of its citizens. I also looked up prayers for those who are in our armed forces, domestic and overseas, those who serve in our police and fire departments, those who put their lives on the line, who also look after the care of its citizens. Lord, I also pray for salvation of those who serve in our local governments, those who have not yet come to faith in Jesus Christ, that we know that they will not get any special treatment because of their high position, yet at the same time, as long as there is breath in their lungs, they have every ability, like everyone else in the world, to repent and believe in Jesus Christ with salvation. God, we pray for your divine will to be done in this place and in these meetings, and for you to be glorified in all things, as in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell and second by Frierson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five is citizens' comments. I see we have two people on here this evening that haven't been here before, so allow me to read the procedure for public comments at city council meetings. The opportunity to speak to the council is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the city. The city council appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The council strives to make the best decision for the city and public input is very helpful. The city must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. It is unlawful for any person to disturb or interrupt a meeting of the city council. Please be respectful for the duties of the city council and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address and address your comments to the council. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the council requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the council or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of a repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. The city council does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, and at the appropriate time might do so in the departmental commentary section. So without further ado, we have Jessica Clinton.
Hi.
Hi. Good afternoon.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Clinton. I'm on the floor today here, and I came in to briefly touch on the subject of chickens. I brought my community and a group of people behind me. I'm going to start by saying I came in and I had a meeting with Richard Irons just by myself, and he was very discouraging and very biased and kind of shut me down with the subject of chickens in the community. There's data concerns in which I gave him feedback on how, you know, it can still be, you know, doable for what his concerns were, having had no experience at all with chickens, which is what he's there. So I left the meeting feeling very discouraged and frustrated, as we have a lot of surrounding cities around us that currently have chickens in the community as well. I uploaded to the Wheel of, well, we have Wheel of Zion page on Facebook, and then we have an actual separate page for the chicken ordinance that I and a couple others created. And I uploaded the results from that conversation there, and all honesty and transparency of what was that, and it kind of sparked a fire in our community I wasn't really expecting. I had a lot of people rallied behind me that were wanting the same thing, and kind of frustrated at the answers that I got as well, and wanting a little bit more. So we're kind of here to just show our face and just let everybody know that this is our interest, this is what we're passionate about, and we would love to know how to get on the agenda in regards to talking about this subject in a correct way, but that there is just more than one of them. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Vicky Cardenas?
Hi.
Did I pronounce that properly?
Yes, thank you.
Cardenas.
Cardenas.
Cardenas, okay. Got it right.
Hi. I'm Vicky Cardenas. I live here in Zion, Illinois as well, and I am also here to bolster this point with argument on behalf of the paper of raising chickens in our backyards. I would like to remind the council that the median income households of our city is $64,000. Last time I checked at Walmart, eggs are $5.46 a dozen. By being able to raise chickens in our backyards, possibly I know Tractor Supply sells them for in a bunch of four, that would provide each family with four eggs on the daily. I would also like to add that the breeds sold at Tractor Supply are primarily egg-laying hens that are also bred to be raised in this area of hot and cold weather. I know there is a concern of bird food right now, which is why we have this egg shortage. However, I would like to add that the contamination of bird food is very low unless you are in close proximity of feces of chickens or birds. I also would like to add that right now our citizens are at risk of bird food if you have bird feeders. We're also at risk of other diseases from cats and dogs. And I would also like to add that cats and dogs do not provide us with sustenance. They do make us happy because they're cute and we love them, but they do not provide us with food for our families. I would further suggest that, if allowed, it would be a great idea for the city of Zion to subsidize the cost to families that are low-income families that have children and are willing and interested to raise chickens in their backyards. I know there is also a concern of chickens getting loose, chickens making noise, dogs also getting loose, cats also get loose. Chickens do not, do not breed like boosters. We are not asking for boosters at the moment, but it would be great to be given the chance to have chickens and raise them in our community, such as neighboring communities have right now.
Right. Thank you very much. Item number six is consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on February 4th, 2025 at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell and second by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip.
Bills, counters 147662 through 147759, drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $452,273.93.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven, consider passing ordinance as follows. 7A, abating the tax heretofore levied of the year 2024 to pay the principal of an interest on $3,140,000. Taxable general obligation refunding bonds. Alternate revenue source series 2017 of the city of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, per Director Conway.
Thank you, Mayor and the council. The ordinance you have in front of you will abate the GOB series 2017 principal and interest payments on our 2024 tax year levy. Essentially, this is an annual thing. It's a reminder, the tax levy, these, this bond can be put on the tax levy, which would appear on residents' real estate taxes. So basically, we are securing the bond like your mortgage, your house secures your mortgage. We have other revenue sources. We do not need to put this on the tax bill. This ordinance will abate that tax, and nothing will appear on the residence tax bills. I recommend approval of the ordinance.
All right. Is there a motion?
All move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Frierson. Does the council have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So these are bonds, is this for the ballpark property?
Yes.
Okay. And so when did we, when did we issue that bond? That was?
14 refund.
14 and will be funded in '17.
Yeah. Okay. So how much longer do we have to pay on this?
I think that only goes another five or six years.
Okay.
I'd have to double check on that. I'm mature even with refinancing, but that's my gut deal.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number B, authorizing and approving a proposal and work agreement with Deegan and Associates LLC in the city of Zion, ground working, groundwater monitoring, reporting, and landfill inspection, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Attention to proposal for the environmental engineering services for the city's closed landfill. Services will include groundwater monitoring, deployed, landfill inspection, and recording that required by ICPA for closed landfill permits. Staff request and recommend approval of the proposal for the environmental services from Deegan and Associates of Libertyville, Illinois, in the amount of $30,000. The proposed contract is for the fiscal year 26 and will be a budgeted item within the waste part.
All right. Is there a motion to approve and authorize the proposal and work agreement with Deegan and Associates?
So moved.
All second.
Motion by Stackhouse, second by Fisher. Any questions or comments from the council?
Quick question, right. Is the 30, is this the same as last year, or has this increased?
This is about $5,000 cheaper.
Okay.
Along with this monitoring, Deegan and Deegan Associates have been applying to diminish the amount of required testing and reporting procedures on that. We were decreased a little bit on landfill too, but we're still heavy on landfill law, so that's why we'll fully drop down. The other aspect of this is we're trying to get it annually. Right now, we are able to get it quarterly, so that should reduce some of that cost too. So the goal is, this will probably continue 15, 20 more years, but the goal is to get it annually.
So just one test a year?
One test a year.
Yeah.
And then, you know, a minor cost to do all that, which is probably going to be right around $5,000.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven, C, vacating real property in the city of Zion, Ebenezer Avenue from 27th Street to 28th Street, per Director Roberts.
Thank you again, sir. Attention to application request from Zion Park District for the right-of-way vacation of unapproved Ebenezer Avenue between 27th Street and 28th Street. Zion Park District had previously purchased the adjacent lots of Ebenezer Avenue from the city to construct a maintenance facility and will utilize the vacated right-of-way as an access to the new facility. Service legal and recording fees shall be paid by the Zion Park District. Staff request and recommend final approval for the requested vacation of Ebenezer right-of-way.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the vacating of real property on Ebenezer Avenue?
So moved.
Motion by Stackhouse?
All second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions or comments? By the commissioner? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven, D, authorizing and approving the Protect Lake County and participating member agencies agreement on behalf of the city of Zion, per Chief Barton.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. This is in reference to Protect Lake County. In 2023, representatives from DePaul University, the University of Illinois at Chicago, and Loyola University approached police counterparts in Lake County about participating in a pilot project funded by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. The project's goal is to establish a behavioral threat assessment management, BTAM team, in Lake County. The proactive approach intends to help ensure community safety by identifying and mitigating potential threats before they escalate. This initiative is part of the broader Illinois Target Violence Prevention and Intervention Initiative. In April of 2024, an informal meeting hosted in Lincolnshire Village Hall drew over 75 attendees from diverse fields, including mental health, law enforcement, education, healthcare, veterans affairs, and public health. I provided for your review of composition and purpose of Protect Lake County. Additionally, I respectfully request approval to participate in this program and entering into agreement with the provided memorandum of understanding.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve the Protect Lake County and participating member agencies?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
I'll say.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments?
I want to make a comment that this is a good read because it's about prevention rather than reacting, and I hope this project really takes off. This is a really good project from what I've read, and it looks like in my reading, there was some collaboration and efforts in making this happen, and also there's some accountability. I hope this project really flies and sails because it's going to help all of Lake County. So I want to thank you, Chief Barton, for your willingness to take on this project for Lake County, but in particular, the city of Zion. I want to thank you.
Chief Barton, this helps kind of identify some of the mental health issues that the police officers have to address when they're out in the community. Could you talk about that a little bit more?
Yes, sir. So it's a collaborative approach. The goals are to identify and assess individuals that are displaying concerning behavior. This BTAM is to advise on prevention and intervention techniques and strategies, serve as a bit of a centralized hub for information on the training and the resources needed. Now, importantly, this is not a information gathering hub. We're not, we're not gathering information on this, but it's really just consultative to the members and how to, how to address these issues that are happening in another community, for instance, if we've had experience with that. If we've had experience with certain individuals, we can say, hey, we've engaged in these behaviors before, this is what we're learning, this is how we best approach and dealt with these behaviors before they escalate. So, you know, it's, really the goal is to foster communication, collaborate among other community partners, compiling and maintaining a resource directory for violence prevention and mitigation for people if they do say it's a workplace issue. We can, if somebody wants to call us, we can help provide some strategy for that, offering some training, early identification and prevention strategies. And then we also potentially could be reviewing and advising on cases involving individuals exhibiting some of those concerning behaviors. We do, I'll note that we do work with the Lake County State Attorney's Office on this. We, the Zion Police Department has actually recently worked on a case locally with the State's Attorney's Office on a BTAM order, although we're not part of this membership agency unless this council approves. We did consult with them on some of these concerning behaviors about an incident we had, we had here locally. I don't know if I answered your question, but I've, now I can try to clarify.
You did. I think it addresses real world problems, like the one that you're referring to that happened right here in our city. But in the report, it just gives a few examples, just to kind of put things in context, like a scenario that might initiate a review. And here's just one example. Parents notify law enforcement that their 21-year-old son is driving to the state capitol. They state that he recent, has recently grown paranoid about the government spying on him and says he wants to speak to the governor. So that's the type of thing that could initiate a review instead of saying, well, something has to happen before law enforcement becomes involved. Well, this is something happening, and this project is meant to address how to handle situations like that.
And I'll note that the, I attended a conference earlier or late last year, and part of that, part of the presentation was from the U.S. Secret Service that specifically talks about, and they give you an outline on teaching local law enforcement how to address these things from the Secret Service perspective, which, as you know, is the protect the president, so a lot of times they're seeing and recognizing these behaviors earlier on, and allowing us to have some insight on how to address these things and be part of the conversation earlier rather than, as Commissioner points out, reacting to a problem after it's already happened.
I just have one question. The funding's coming from the Department of Homeland Security. Has this funding already been received?
Yes, there's no cost to us, yes.
I, yeah.
But the grant is already there.
Okay. Yeah, because in these days, we don't know whether people are going to get their funds or not.
That's true.
Okay. Thank you.
But there's no cost to the city of Zion at all.
Chief Barton, from a logistics and operational standpoint, so going through that scenario, you guys are only involved once you receive a call through 911. This is not us kind of profiling or gathering information on people and going out.
Correct. You are correct. We don't, this is, this is, we're making it accessible to community members to reach out to us and say, I have a concern, whether it's a coworker got fired last week, I saw him show up in the parking lot, he's sitting in his car for several hours, very unusual behavior, he had made some threats, said he had a gun. We want to know, we want to know that first, and we can maybe call the business, or we can work with other partners and try to provide some help to that individual if they're going through a mental health crisis, rather than finding out that this was another ROR shooting, you know, down in, right in Illinois, kind of thing.
We have a more full house than normal. So you had talked, one of the last few meetings, about the app that the department is using. Would that be applicable in getting information to the department as well?
Yeah, that would work. It would, I would prefer a phone call, you know, something like this, but yes, of course. You know, we're, you know, we have been working on next gen 911, so I don't know if that's why I'd use it on text to, text the 911, but yes, the app would be helpful, but really, a phone call would be the best, so we can have some real context to what's happening.
Got it. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Well, this, this is just between council, and we can talk with you later about it, but also there's a service, 211, should you have, know someone that has a mental health issue, you suspect have a mental health issue, they have counselors available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days. 211, they help with rental assistance, all kinds of issues. This started during the pandemic with the United Way of Lake County, and so if you have anyone that has any issues whatsoever, they need counseling, maybe it's rental assistance, 211 is a simple number to dial. And I can address your question after a city council meeting. We had, any additional questions? Thanks for that information, Chief, about the police department being proactive with their training on this. And of course, since the pandemic, we know that mental health issues have been on the rise, and it's something that everyone is trying to work with and understand the issues that our residents are having. So, thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven, E, approving and authorizing a redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Zion, Orion Asset Management LLC, and Plano Pharmaceuticals, Inc., per Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Last year, I don't exactly remember the timeline, but Ron Lance from Lake County Partners approached us, who's sitting over there in the row, great advocate for, for the city, but basically large developments, projects, businesses looking to locate within Lake County, they give order of that and then try and find suitable sites, and we had a site within Trumpet Park that met the needs of Plano Pharmaceuticals, and we have the DOT, the, I don't know what CEO or president of Plano, but very successful internationally, looking to expand into the United States and have a headquarters for his, his products, which is primarily pharmaceutical and IV fluids. You know, there's, especially during the pandemic, where there was a shortage of medical supplies, IV bags, saline, and there's changes in the technology and the regulations that he's able to take advantage of. I want to say it was in North Carolina that a hurricane went through and damaged any manufacturing plant in the U.S. So there's definitely a need here, and with the pharmaceutical hub that we have in Lake County, it was a natural fit. At a few meetings or a couple months ago, we approved a purchase sale agreement for the sale of 21.7 acres in Trumpet Park to Plano Pharmaceuticals, actually Orion Asset Management, which will be the holding company. But that was contingent on the approval of a redevelopment agreement, which spells out all the terms of incentives and deliverables and kind of what we expect from each other on them, on them locating here. Included in that agreement is a real estate tax incentive. There's a TIF district out there, I won't go into all of that, but I'm happy to answer questions on it. But basically, a TIF district allows taxes that come from a project to be invested back in and used to incentivize businesses to be here. It's a big challenge being on the Wisconsin border to attract business here to Zion, much less Lake County. So we're able to balance, kind of level the playing field a bit with the higher taxes and things like that to incentivize businesses to locate here. So we negotiate, we've been negotiating, meeting with the DOT quite a few times, and Jan Shapiro, the attorney here as well, to come up with a, agreeable terms to, for them to locate and construct here. We anticipate that this, the phase one of this project could be 40, 50 jobs, with expansion up to 300 jobs over the next 10 to 15 years. And we encourage the growth of that by scaling the incentives as they continue to expand. So they're here tonight to answer any, if you have specific questions about that, to the extent that you can, they can disclose that. But this would be a great add for, for the city of Zion. I'd love to look back 20 years from now and go, we started that here and have a great large campus building there, with jobs from all over the area. So that's the summary of the three-page redevelopment agreement in front of you, but happy to answer any questions, but I highly strongly recommend approval of the RDA as presented.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the RDA?
All move to approve the RDA. The city of Zion and Orion Asset Management and Plano Pharmaceuticals.
Motion by Fisher and second by Frierson. Any questions or comments from our council members?
Only that we've looked at it extensively and ready to vote.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number eight is discussion, authorization, and approval. Eight A, consider approval of fire, rescue department promotions for Chief Tree.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The city's collective bargaining agreement with firefighters local 1999 calls for May 1st fiscal year duty shift changes to be posted by March 1st. With that in mind, I'm requesting that below promotions be approved with effective dates of May 1st, 2025. This will offer operational continuity, as well as some shift flexibility as we continue to navigate numerous personnel situations, including a lengthy medical situation that one of our management team is going through, along with an anticipated retirement in the early fall. Therefore, I am requesting Battalion Chief Eric Troy be appointed Deputy Chief effective March 1st. Lieutenant Nicholas Urbannett promoted to Battalion Chief effective, I'm sorry, May 1st, on both of those. Firefighter Paramedic Brian Hasky promoted to Lieutenant effective May 1st. A couple points of note, the deputy chief position in this case will remain a 24-hour position, along with some potential special circumstances, assignments as approved by the chief. Additionally, I do not expect that this position will be filled following the anticipated retirement later this fall. Furthermore, we are currently staffed as such that these promotions will not require additional hires. I do appreciate your consideration of these important matters, and happy to answer any clarifying questions if you have any.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve these appointments and promotions.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Questions or comments from the Commissioners? Congratulations to the staff, I know how hard they all worked in protecting our citizens, our city and our residents.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine is departmental commentary. Director Iason is not here because he's not feeling well, so that leaves, first up at bat is Director Roberts.
Good morning. Thanks, sir. Hello, I'm Nelson, the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission will be hosting a open house at the City of Zion, Zion Bennett and Parks Library, this Thursday, February 20th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. They will be discussing the Lake County's, their, their plan for the future, five-year plan for the next future here, and within Lake County, on their drainage issues, large projects, and sure, we're going to talk about our 20th Street project that we're working steadily with them on that. They will have staff over there to discuss with residents any questions they have about stormwater and drainage issues that they're having, and would like to bring up to them, and we can provide some feedback to them at that, at that time, including, you know, detention basins. Luke and their friend over there are always asking about detention basins. So this will be a good one for you to go through, and this is, this Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00.
All right. Is that it, Director Roberts?
That's all I got.
All right. Chief Tree?
Good evening again. Not much additional tonight. I did want to advise the council that I was fortunate to participate earlier today in a face-to-face roundtable meeting with Congressman Schneider and about 22 fire chiefs from Congressional District 10, just talking about different issues with fire and EMS service that we're facing. We know he alone can fix them all, you know, right away, but it's good to have his ear on these things. One of the items that I made sure I talked again about was the challenges we face in protecting our lakefront, along with our neighbors to the north and south, and we just hope that he has ears on that and helps us out with some resources for what we expect to be another busy summer out there, so that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thanks, Chief Tree. Any advice now that the next couple days seem to be, going to be cold, so will someone address the, the freezing cold and maybe warming centers?
Yeah, absolutely. We know this week's going to be pretty cold, and we urge our residents and visitors to check our Facebook pages and our website, but there are warming centers available, City Hall, Park District, Library, Police Department, and certainly, they can call us if they have any questions about hours and availability and stuff like that. And I've mentioned it some previous city council meetings as well, we do ask everybody to be careful with warming in their residences, and not use things like extra candles or cooking materials or cooking appliances to help warm their areas, so if they do find themselves in a pinch, exactly what you mentioned before, 211 is a resource that they could offer some help if they are not able to help themselves.
All right. Thank you, Chief Tree. Chief Barton?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Council. So maybe a little bit of an update, we are, we've been transitioning, I don't know how long the project's been ongoing in, in, in the minds of the Lake County folks that have been starting, the Lake Comm has been, been slowly progressing forward, it seems like it's gaining some traction. So we are, we've hired, the Lake Comm has hired the executive director for this dispatch center, it's going to be a countywide dispatch center, and you'll be seeing some changes coming forward in the, in the next few months. Right now, I believe the intent is to flip the switch, probably July 1st, to, to transition over, we'll see that, don't hold me to that date, but I know the director is, is working hard at standing up this, this facility, getting staff in place, management team in place, and hearing all the things that are needed to operate efficiently as both a call center and a, and a dispatch center for police and fires of the countywide. Part of that transition is going to include some migration from the, the way we do some things, the way we operate, there's going to be some controls that are going to change. Additionally, there's going to be some opportunities that we're going to benefit from this, this transition, whether it's vacation watches, or on-street parking through city-type parking notifications, so just continually to look at our, look at our Facebook page for information, we'll be posting things as they come up, but just, just kind of, we're getting there, it's moving along, I know you sit on the board, and it's, it's been a lot of work, it's been a big lift, and thanks to those that have been involved, but we're getting there.
All right. Thank you, Chief Barton. Director Conway?
Good evening again. As we roll into the spring election season, and we have, the City Hall is an early voting location, I just want to remind that we do not handle anything about the voting, they're simply using our facility. If you have questions about voting, it's the Lake County Clerk handles all of that. There's nothing here at City Hall any of the employees can do to help you, so if you have questions, the Lake County Clerk.
And the Lake County Clerk for all of you is Anthony Vega, they have their Lake County website. We dealt with some of those issues during the past presidential elections, where people thought that we were controlling the voting site, but we just offer our building, as Director Conway mentioned, and the county runs everything else. We have really nothing to do other than providing the building. And Anthony Vega is the county clerk, and they usually put out a lot of information about the voting sites and information as to where the voting sites are in Zion and different locations throughout Lake County. Thank you, Director Conway. Administrator Nabel?
So thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I have two items tonight. The first is Director Roberts is not one to toot his own horn, so I'm going to do it for the public works guys. They take a lot of heat from people, whether it's on Facebook or whatever, about streets and plowing, things like that, but for their safety, our staff, is it 16-hour shifts before they have to rest? So if you don't see them out at midnight, plowing when there's snow still coming down, it may be because there was a long shift both day and night prior to that, we try and rotate that around, but please be patient with, with staff. And also remember that we do not have a significant number of staff handling all of the streets, but then we also have a, not a significant number of staff that address water main breaks, especially during this cold time and change fluctuations in temperature. We do get, we have an aging infrastructure, and we do have a lot of main breaks, and they were out till, what, 10 o'clock last night? In sub-zero temperatures, covered in water, dealing with main breaks, so that's, that's their job, they do it, they do it well, but just understand what they deal with during these times to, to try and keep the streets safe and keep water flowing to your houses, so, and just be patient with, with the city employees. The second item, since we have a lot of people attending, thank you for coming out, I, I wouldn't say, we, we have to consider safety of the entire city when we look at decisions like chickens and stuff, and I am no chicken expert, I will admit that pretty, it's not on my, on my resume, but we do have to look at questions and answers for a variety of concerns, and I'm sure you know all of these, and what I'm going to say, you've already talked about it, but surrounding communities, especially out west, there's a lot more space, a lot more rural communities. Bird flu was mentioned, and while there's no, that I saw, there's no reported cases of bird flu neither in Illinois or Wisconsin from backyard flocks. All the surrounding states around us do have it up in Wisconsin, and 33% of the cases do come from backyard, backyard flock cases. So that's a concern we have to look at, and we do have to look at noise, and I understand dogs and stuff get out and bark, but that's not necessarily the reason to add more noise to, to those issues. And we do have to be concerned about, we, we see this with unmowed lawns, where we have vermin, rodents, raccoons with trash, things like that, and feed and things like that do have a potential to attract predators, predatory animals and, and vermin to the area. So I'm not saying that those are the valid, but those are questions we have to consider when looking at the safety of the entirety of the city, especially in population-dense areas, like the old parts of Zion, and take into consideration, so it's not opposed to, I understand the reasons behind wanting them, and we, we have to make decisions on a daily basis of the welfare and protection of the city as a whole, even if it means inconvenience for a few, so I'm sorry you felt discouraged on the discussion, but I wanted to at least put out there, there are discussions, there are considerations, and it's not just a flat no without reason for, for discussion, so, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you for addressing that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you for giving this to the audience, thank you Commissioners, and all good points by the city administrator. One additional aspect, and I think you know about this, but any change to the regulation on chicken, or the, the hosting of chicken in the city would need to go through our zoning process. So I think you do know that, obviously, all those concerns that the city administrator very articulately stated would have to go through those. For those of you who are not familiar, the planning, the Joint Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Zion is a subordinate board to this body, they make a recommendation, and you would need to file an application and follow all those steps to go forward with regards to that. My partner Aaron handles those very adeptly.
Who?
My partner is the lawyer there, so if you do show up, you're not going to see me, you're going to see somebody who's much smarter than I am, and, but you'll have to readdress all those concerns, I'm sure, and you'll have to follow the process for zoning. Our zoning code is online, it's well-kept, and it is ran through the business, or the building department. So that is just the process and procedures, because the initial question, I believe, was how do we get before the board? And that process starts with a zoning application being filed. So we look forward to seeing an application if you're going to file it, and we wish you all the best. And it will be processed like all other zoning applications before the City of Zion's Joint Planning and Zoning Board.
All right. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. And just, thank you for addressing that, thank you to our council. Welcome to the guys from Plano and Orion, so excited to have you guys in the city and see what the development brings, so.
That's it. All right. All right. Commissioner Fisher?
No, I don't have anything tonight. Thanks, everybody coming out. It's great to see people getting passionate about something, and actually come out and want to bring it, bring it before the board, and I really appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah. Again, in some of my remarks about public comments to the city council, we appreciate you coming in and making your points to the council members. We've had this issue brought before and before, and I don't think it got passed to zoning, planning, and zoning, but we understand what you're saying, and one of the things that we try to do within the city, and we've had these quarterly forums for three or four years now, where we try to listen to our residents, how we can improve our city, because it's not just the five people that sit up here that make up how we, how the city succeeds, so we have to hear your voices. And whether the decision is yes or no, it doesn't mean that you're not being heard, but you will be heard and heard fairly. And again, welcome to our new partners here, we're looking forward to the development in Trumpet Park. Administrator Nabel mentioned the fact of what incentives and our competition with Wisconsin, because we've had higher property taxes here for our businesses and residents, it's made it really difficult for us to compete with Wisconsin for businesses, but we've made some changes over the last six to 10 years in terms of creating TIF districts within our city and opportunity zones, and of course, the new money that we've received from the state, that's going to allow us to lower property taxes here, starting in 2026, for most of our residents, is going to be good for us from a economic development standpoint and for all of our residents here. So it's something that we've been working really hard on in the last several years to make sure that we are able to get our property taxes down, but also to continue to bring in great businesses. And if you've been out west by the ballpark, you'll see that there are a lot of good things happening here and on the south end of town that we're doing with the businesses coming in, and some of the businesses, people don't register real wills, for example, multi-million-dollar businesses that's come in across from Walmart, that big, that building was vacant for about 15 years.
It was almost 25, actually.
Almost 25 years?
Yeah, time flies.
When you're having fun.
Yeah.
But we had a business that relocated from Gurnee to Zion, and they're, they're a big part of our economic engine here in Zion, so we are making a lot of progress. One of the things that I like to talk about is, six years ago, only 40% of our residents owned their homes, that means we had 60% of our homes here being rented, and now that's flipped in six years at 60%, and in a 60% homeownership here, which is great. It helps spread the tax base around, helps to lower taxes, and we get more people in shopping at local businesses. So we're making good progress, we've still got a long way to go, but trust, all that are here, for the first time, that we're working really hard on everyone's behalf to make this just a, a great place to, to live, work, and play. Item number 10 is announcements. On March 4th, we have a city council meeting at 7:00 PM, right here, and on March 18th, as Director Conway was mentioning, well, we usually have a city council meeting and a township meeting, our meetings will be canceled due to early voting here at City Hall. Then on April 1st, can't believe we're talking about April already, at 7:00, there'll be a city council meeting. So without further, one point of order.
They announced that there will be a township meeting on the 4th before the city council meeting, they said it tonight.
Well, thank you for that, Mary Lou, we didn't get that, we didn't get that information in our inbox. So on March 4th, there will be a township meeting here at 6:00?
Correct.
Followed by a Zion City Council meeting at 7:00. Thank you for the addition, Mary Lou. All right. Item number 11 is, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Fisher?
Echoed by me.
And echoed with McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Thanks for coming out, everyone, stay warm, dress properly, and thanks for coming out.